Take you guys who is out right on this start.
Yeah, go ahead. As far as I know Rick's gonna be here. I'm gonna talk to Jamie or Liza. Travis is here.
Yeah.
Ask that question. Is Travis gonna make it?
Do I have to be mentally present?
No, I don't know. You're physically here.
Physically here, we're good.
Yeah. I don't know how many of us are fully mentally here. I'll never claim that. What the heck? What kind of message I get I gotta has to be from? Well, they haven't started on the Kennaman Bridge yet. They got until August 2nd.
Yeah.
Grabbed an NDAKo highlighter and threw it up here.
Would you need the pencil?
No.
I got a couple.
I got. Oh, good morning Jamie.
Rick is here somewhere.
He's at the candy machine.
He's gotta get his bunch of crack. Haven't heard one way or the other.
I don't know, I can actually call the meeting order.
Jean said we only had to be here physically.
I can only drop my kids off so early. I had to beg to go a little earlier than I should. It's all about numbers when you're a licensed daycare.
We'll wait a minute or two. I am on my way. Liza Taylor. See if she texts and drives, huh?
You just incriminated her.
Talk and text.
Talk and text, huh?
Hey Siri.
Well, I don't count. You gotta be here.
What was that, Rick?
It's all Rick.
You may only have to be physically present, but at least you have to be. Your possessions can't just be here. You have to be here.
Okay. I hate to have anyone miss out on any information. That's why I didn't call the meeting order yet if they're on their way. Liza's. She just went past the 31 intersection, so. We'll wait. We got nothing that has to be. That's on a time restraint. We'll have to say it once, not three times.
No, I'll shut and I'll stay up.
Wore a bright shirt to these. Everybody be cheerful. I'm not sure.
Well, I don't know. I'm just saying.
Yeah, bright colors. Anyone who's watching the video, we're gonna wait till all the commissioners here, which is about another five to 10 minutes.
Can we just pause it?
Sure.
That worked really nice before.
Plus you have.
Hold on.
Yeah, let's start recording.
Okay, we're good.
Uh, before you sit down, I'll call the meeting to order. Okay, have a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion to approve.
Second, Rick? Any discussion? Hearing nun Jamie.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Liza.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed. Okay, budget discussion.
I just wanted to let you guys know what I gave you was, okay, what I emailed out to you didn't have in that summary page was the JDA. Job development. So that's why I just made a copy of the first couple pages of the one that had everything in it. Everything that we went through on our budget deal. It just shows now on that summary page added the joint job development authority to that. Otherwise, it was in your board. In that way, you've got that information.
And then in this one, oh. JDA right there. Okay, that's still in here.
This here is, this one you're looking at is where I took. The tail is the same.
Karen, I have.
I just added J. Yes, what?
No, I have one question. Um, the fund 2101. When you gave Jim the statement the end of June, it says the, like, to date is only like 34,500. But in the meeting the other day, you said it, the balance was 178,000. And on here, it kind of looks like that 178. So where's the discrepancy?
First, what fund do we?
2101. 2101. It's the building fund.
The building. 2101. Right here.
That was cute. Didn't know it was open.
Okay, so here's where I get that from.
Cause I have.
41. Page 41, right?
Um, yeah, yep.
Okay, and you're looking at the budget where it doesn't have any.
I'm looking at his budget, like his transmittals you gave him.
Oh, yeah, okay, let me get there.
As of June, but then the other, the number you gave us during the meeting was as of like July 1st, so. It's a significant difference in.
Okay, 21. Now, we've been the end of, no, that would be in the end. Actually, his budget sheet is the end of May. Or end, now, end of May, 1st of June, because I had to pull these guys out. All these budget sheets got pulled the 1st of June, so they could get.
Yeah.
It's like June 7th or whatever. Cause we didn't have end of month done. Well, end of June. Cause they got on the 1st of June. First part of June. Okay, so we're looking at the building fund, 2101. Okay. Okay, so here's what I look at. So that's that, but here, this is the 1st of July, our financial statements where this building fund is actually at.
Well, why are the $140,000 discrepancy? Like, shouldn't this number be that number?
See, this is updated as the 1st of July. That's where that number, every month that's updated.
I get that.
But this was the end of May.
So where the 140,000 come from? Like, I feel like when nothing is moved out of it comes.
Okay, but something was moved out of it. This is what was spent. The 34,000.
So this is a big actual, like.
This is not a balance. This is what was spent to date, which I mean, I guess he spent something on.
Right, to date.
Right, that would be what was spent to date. It was the expenditure sheet. Yeah, okay. This is actually, has his CD in it. That's actual cash balance.
Okay, that's what he was asking.
This is your budget, what was taken out to date. Yeah, he spent that, but he doesn't.
Shouldn't it still have?
He doesn't budget it here.
Well, it could be that transfer to this.
Right.
But the thing is, if you see a transfer, it's gotta be, this is where you see the transfer. These are your cash balances, and that's why you guys get the sheets. You can see the actual cash amount.
Would this amount be in this 51,000?
That would make sense.
I would say this 34,000 here has to be in this 51,000. And I, this is, in the June, this is end of May. So somewhere in there, he spent maybe another 16.
We probably have another bill from court facilities or something for.
Yeah, and if he pulls his July, cause now we have lives, we have the end of June out. This number.
Should be closer to that.
Should look at that number.
It has to match that.
Okay.
It absolutely will match that. That sheet, he should be looking at.
No, no, he doesn't give that sheet.
No, but if he wants to know the.
Right, yeah.
Control of gets that fund.
Right, yeah, yeah.
The balance in that fund.
I'm just letting you know, and he doesn't know that. Yeah. You guys get it. And then if he comes and asks.
Then, okay. Okay, that's.
But yeah, that's.
140,000 is.
Yeah. That would be a panic moment.
Different to.
Okay. All right. Okay, and, um, I don't know, I didn't get any questions from you guys when I emailed out anything, but taking out the bump ups, what I was trying to do is get that general fund under the 60, the 60 mils. And I did go through the auditor. Did you guys have specific questions? Cause I tried to delist everything.
So the, uh, when you say the bump ups, that's all those requested amounts?
Right, that's.
By all those departments?
Just all the requested amounts for all the departments.
You took them out.
For the no bump up one, just to get that general down. Plus I took and put the, like I listed, I put the request from the landfill, I put all that back in the landfill. And took that out of the general fund.
Okay, the, uh, wow.
So basically what you printed, no bump ups, no landfill.
Yep.
What about benefits? Or just that's part of, like, just a landfill?
Everything went back. So there's, the landfill is, yeah, okay.
Uh, the weed control went, uh, went up. By about 3, 3,000. Did something change in their request? From when you first got it? Well, uh, you said on the, this is the, the original with everything. It was at 79, and now the new one's at 82. I'm just curious. I know it's only $3,000.
Yeah, I'll look at each one.
Yeah, I'm okay, cause mine's this far.
Right here. That's our, it's actually right here. And I would have to dig out.
Okay, well, here's the.
The old sheet.
This is. No, weed control.
Okay, yep. You can just get an answer out. If I, I'll look at it. I haven't had time to look at any of this. Sorry.
Unless it was this question. No.
Okay.
Change in the weed. The only one I was focused on was the general fund. Just to try to get the mills under.
I'll look at, I'll look at that. I have that portfolio, so I'll look at it, see what changed there. 112 on. Uh, JDA, did we appropriate or we do?
The JDA is a separate mill. And when Travis had requested, Ann Beaver was 150 pounds. So what I did is I put in your joint, your job, I put in the JDA and, um, milled. It's 156,000, but that's because I got that 4% uh, delivery tax.
You just appropriated 156. We're not gonna, we didn't open up a separate account with Mill Levy in there, did we?
No, that is a separate mill.
It is, yeah. It's specific to Mill Levy. If we do it.
To be, I mean.
And just so you guys could see, because that was a request.
I know it was a request, but to me, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
And to me, I feel like I would rather us support.
I would, uh.
I, I don't know. I, that's a lot of money to something.
Yeah, I don't want, I myself don't wanna mill an amount.
Oh.
I would, uh.
But it didn't remind me of that. See, it didn't change it for us.
I would be more in favor of, uh, saying appropriate like 50,000 to it again like we did last year.
So, but the reason they, we did it the way we did it is that there's three cities that have existing JDAs. The way the century code reads is that, um, the max that anybody in the county can be taxed for a JDA is the four mills. But if you don't do it across the whole county, um, then you'd have to leave out those cities that have it. And then those cities would have to go less, and then the, the MECD and JDA would make those cities whole again. So after you do all of that, MECD's only getting 50,000.
But why do we really need it if three of the biggest cities across the country already have their own JDA?
It's not for those JDAs, it's for the county stuff, so we can actually do job development outside of those cities.
So if we scratch it completely, then with what you just said, if we, if we were to cut out county JDA paying that, how does that affect the communities?
Then.
Financially?
Financially, so it's a, it's a balancing act. So if the cities know that the county's not gonna, um, tax for the JDAs, then they can max out their taxation at the city level. So like, Beulah JDA, for example, is like 44,000. Hazen's like 35,000, and then Stanton's like 2,000, cause it's all based on their individual.
Right, each town does their own, so to speak.
Right.
So if we give, as a county, we give them the J. JDA 50,000, then you're saying they have to do some math because of the differences in the towns, what they collect? Is that what you were saying?
Right, so if the county does it, and the cities don't change theirs, then the county can't take any from Beulah, Hazen, or Stanton, because they're only allowed to be taxed up to four mills in any combination of JDA. So it's a balancing act between the county and the cities. So if you don't want the, those three cities to do it, then we'd have to adjust the amount, and then we wouldn't tax any of those three communities for the JDA. You could do 50,000, and then those JDAs could keep their up to four mills.
Those communities.
According to what it says in that, it says that if another city mills, overall, the county can't be taxed for mills, including what the cities mill. That's what it reads.
Right.
So that means if even Stanton or Hazen would mill one or, one each, we could only mill one. That's my understanding of that.
I just wanna say.
And if they mill three or two, or even four, we can't mill, cause overall, you can't.
Right, yeah, it can't, it can't exceed four. In any combination.
Right, if, yeah, right.
Right.
Exact.
Yep.
So why not, so since they decided they were gonna reimburse Hazen and Beulah to get rid of their JDA, why not Stanton? Well.
No, they would do Stanton. They would do any of them that had it.
Oh, because I thought it was 50 for Beulah, 50 for Hazen, and 50 for the county.
No, it's based on their values. So like, if you drop Beulah down to two, say we're doing two, then Beulah would only be able to, um, fund like 22,000 of theirs, and then the additional 22,000 would come out of this.
Okay.
To them. Hazen, if they went down to 17, then 17 would go to Hazen and then whatever.
You're saying that you're gonna, Beulah and Hazen are still gonna mill.
Yeah.
Okay, so if they mill two each of them, that's four mills. And I understand the writing we found, Todd, look at it. We can't mill them, because four mills are being milled in the community. It isn't like the airport. It doesn't even read like that.
No, I know it doesn't read like, it, it has a completely different code to it.
Right.
And talking with Linda Slavovic from Association of Counties, there, she gave me an excerpt that said, "In combination." So.
Right.
If the county does two, or whatever we have, then the city can do up to that to get to four.
Okay, so it's, okay. But if you got two cities both milling two, you got four mills.
I think.
No, 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 it's only to that community.
Yep, yep, it's per.
You don't, you don't add Beulah and Hazen together. They're completely separate tax districts.
So if.
On their city.
Between the two of you, what I'm gathering is, so Beulah says, let's say Mercer County says four mills. Now, there's four mill bucket there. Beulah does two, Hazen does two, Stanton does one, Pixie does zero. So, um.
Well, if the county.
If the county does four, then nobody else can do it.
Nobody else can mill.
Okay.
Because that's the max.
That direction, right.
But if, but if everybody mills three, all the cities would mill three, then the county can only mill one.
Yeah.
All right, now we're almost milling three, so they're only gonna be able to mill one, 1.22.
Well, they would only be able to mill one.
1.22.
The difference between whatever the county has.
And what Jean was talking about earlier, an allocation, then we wouldn't even do the JDA portion of it. We wouldn't do a Mill Levy at all. If you're just gonna do an allocation to MECD, then we could take it out of our general like we did this year.
I would rather see an allocation than a Mill Levy.
For now, that's what I would like to do, because I know I, I'm a little opposed to the mill. Anyway, I'd like to change that to like a $50,000 appropriation.
Should have to pay for something Beulah's doing, or Hazen's doing, or Stanton's doing.
And then.
But MECD is, is the countywide. It's not specific to those cities.
Right. And then this.
So the $50,000 allocation they got last year, what did MECD do with it?
There, um, we've approved them, what was it, 25 or 27,000?
25.
To a rail study. And that, that's all we've offered.
All we've given them is 25,000.
Yeah. Yeah, and that rail study is from the county line to the end of the line, which is near Zapp. And that's to accommodate, or to figure out how much traffic's on there, what upgrades would be needed if we get the additional traffic that they're talking about for the nickel processing. Plus, they're also talking about bringing, um, frac sand by rail and mixing it with the sand that our current mines are doing to send off to the oil field. So that rail study is gonna look at, you know, existing traffic, future traffic. What are the implications on with additional traffic on unit trains? How does that affect crossings in Hazen? How does that affect crossings in, um, Beulah? The Stanton crossing, there's an overpass, great separation, so there's not an issue there. But that's, that's what the travel, or the rail study's looking at.
So JDA, how do they tie in with MECD?
So MECD's an existing entity. Um, there's, um, I think there's three options on how a county can have a JDA. One of them, uh, the commission would essentially establish a board. There's a procedure to it. I don't know what the second one is, and the third one, um, is you would contract with an existing economic development group to do the JDA. And that's what we're looking at in this scenario. So essentially, the commission would, um, approve that MECD would do double duties as the job development, job development authority for the county. That's how the, the Mill Levy would work, cause we'd have to have an, um, an established JV to give that to. We can't just give it to MECD. They have to be doing the job development, um, authority as well.
Well, I'd like to see that changed, uh, I, I'm, I'm gonna be stubborn on that one. I'd like to see that changed from a mill to a $50,000 appropriation, like last year. And then I would like to, uh, see the books on, uh, for JDA and MECD.
Well, clearly there isn't any.
I have no idea of what their, what their finances are, but if you're sitting on, uh, 500,000 or a million dollars in the bank, and then you're asking the county for another 156,000, I, I wanna know why. I wanna know where that money's all going before I just hand out money. On almost all the rest, I have a pretty good. I'm only gonna say idea where the money goes. JDA, I've none. I mean, other than the finances, I'm trying to say. Library. We pretty much know. Historical society, I gotta be very careful how I word that, because I have an acronym I always use. We know where that one is. Commission on Aging, Water, Resource, even though I got a little heartburn there. Western Plains, that's a very good briefing on that one. Ambulance. Is the ambulance, uh?
They're not milling.
That's an appropriation?
District yet. They are being.
They're in the process of deciding if they're going to or not.
That might even go away, right?
They have to have a, no, I don't think.
Or no, um, okay.
Careful on your wording, Jean.
Yeah.
It's gonna be.
We're not getting rid of the ambulance.
No. No, we're not.
When they're gonna have a vote to mill.
Right.
And then once that happens, then they'll be like the struggle side in the library, they'll have their own district, like the fire districts. And they won't be coming out of, you know, it'll be a different tax. Right now, they get milled out of the, uh, it's a county mill that's different than a district, where you guys have city over it, as part of your.
Right, but is the ambulance, uh, a Mill Levy?
For the whole county.
It is a Mill Levy.
Yes, it's a mill that we use for the whole county, whereas a district mill. Yes, it's a mill that we use for the whole county, whereas a district mill is their district. So then it wouldn't be the whole county.
It wouldn't be milled for the, is it coming to general funding, or is it milled?
No, it's a separate mill, but it uses the county mill to, you know.
Comes out of the total.
In the calculations.
In the calculations, yes.
See, like the airport, that's a mill levy.
Yep, they have their own separate mill, their own board.
And that's why I'm asking, what's the ambulance?
Which?
Yeah, they have their district board, now they have to, he was looking at how, he just, district.
He brought it up this morning.
I believe like she said, they, they're working on it. They're gonna have a vote.
Yeah, there's.
When would you think, when are you looking at?
I, I'm not a part of that portion. That's a own separate entity doing that, and I know that they're working through it with Carmen.
Yeah.
Because they need to go through the.
There's a little date or anything kind of stuff.
I haven't heard a date, no. And unfortunately, we didn't get to have our meeting last time, cause we didn't have enough people there for a forum.
I do not believe it's gonna happen before.
It will not happen before, but final budget.
So this is kind of.
So like at dawn.
The only thing, one thing that guys gotta take in their number too, is like, even like when we had that meeting the other day?
Yes.
You know, if, you know, we gotta watch two, and that fifty-seven, twenty-one, three mills or whatever. We also gotta watch the, if the property tax that goes through, this is all.
I can't.
Well, yeah, and that's where.
No, actually, it would be one, one that we're already under.
It's only one you're.
So the one in board.
No, it's the one that we've already did. It's the one we did already last year. If it goes through, if it gets on the ballot and goes through, it's last year's budget.
This was the bump ups, we thought.
This year, correct, yeah.
Twenty-four, yeah. So.
Seventeen thousand in bump ups, and then there was another couple thousand for, um.
Yeah, but that's.
Yeah.
So we hope it don't. Ambulance five, four point six two.
All the requests.
Well, I mean, it's just gonna be, like they said too, it'll take years of.
That's what I was looking for.
Oh, I'm gonna say that this has all.
The ambulance can be up to five mills.
Probably.
With the, her budget is four point six two.
Right.
That's what I was asking, okay.
Yeah, nobody wants to say that. You only got two people in your house. Yeah, and that's why I went in and I hit that, took out some bump ups, just so you guys could see that. And then you guys decide how not to.
And I'm just glancing at.
So if you're seeing on that budget, you don't have.
Oh, okay, so the hundred and forty-four thousand is what's.
What, what's?
What you budgeted last year.
Right.
But do you, do you think those numbers really equal to fifty-nine?
Well, I know, I know they don't equal, I mean, if you add these numbers and then these numbers, they probably do. But I'm gonna say this has all of my benefits in there too, probably, maybe.
Benefits are in a different section, yeah.
Yep.
Carmen.
Did he mail, did he just email that?
Just got it, nearly, two minutes ago.
Oh, good, yay.
Yeah, I know.
I don't even, you've got, you've got it two, but you haven't done it.
That's this.
Information from Charlie regarding our transfer sheet on the highway. I just wanna make sure my.
You had an email and question for him on Friday, and then he just responded.
Okay.
Have bump ups in, so I should have looked him up just.
So, I know she got it, but she didn't.
Is that?
Appreciate that.
It's a pleasure.
That is, uh, affects the budget?
Yes.
And does it make a change to the budget?
Change.
I don't think, not really, that's the county road fund. And I just wanted to verify those transfer funds are.
Our mills are close to what we said, what we had.
Okay.
Yeah, so what you got, and he's confirmed, we're good with that.
So probably no change as of today. Could be done, all right.
Carmen, Carmen.
Trying to get some order here.
In that blue book on page six, for Dawn's line?
Yeah.
Right, to the best of our abilities for this math on this sheet, we come up with one fifty-one, three fourteen, not two fifty-nine.
Okay, so which book are you, you're looking at, the full book, not the?
Page six.
Which one, Jean?
Page six of Treasure Line.
Right, okay, well, this, okay, this is the one that I didn't take out the bump ups. So I had the original quarter bump ups in, so that included her bump ups. Her, uh.
We went off of her bump up. Right?
Yes, whatever you.
I added up no bump ups.
Oh, great.
Cause this book is no bump ups.
I thought this book was supposed to be no bump ups.
You said this book is no bump ups.
Okay, I didn't know which one you're looking at, no. Okay, hold on, I wanna get to the right.
One, I thought we were working off of, are we not?
No, this is what I was working on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Me too.
Why do you guys discuss the fund? Chairman wants to try and.
Why is her balance two fifty-nine? Requested budget for the treasure.
Okay.
Because if I add up this whole column, it comes up to one fifty-one.
It's just the after ten, there's one.
Okay.
And so.
No bump ups?
It's not written on there, but.
Yeah, she has me written on. Trying to find money.
Thank you, Jean.
Right here, this is the one.
Okay.
All right, it's what to this page. Right, back here.
Oh, okay, yeah, I've seen.
So when she says that perhaps exactly, nobody gets it out.
Okay, so you're saying that all the bump ups should be.
See, their sheet over there isn't the same as this. Their sheet over there has like two hundred and fifty million dollars in there.
And to me, that's the one put in the bump ups.
There you go.
You said this is no bump ups, the one that you tried to.
Wait, I wanna see the front page.
Tomship.
Yes, no bump ups, right.
That's A to secondary, this appears.
Page six, requested twenty-twenty-five line for the treasure.
We don't, we don't. It's a non, it's a non levy fund.
Why?
Yeah, we didn't put it in.
Because we can't come up with that number, I think. That equals one fifty-one.
Okay. All right. So you guys got one fifty-one?
Three fourteen, when I added up this whole column. Which, this is just the dollar fifty raise.
Right.
Right, yep, I kept all that in.
Yep.
All right, hold on, let me, I wanna grab her sheet down here, but.
Mark it, mark it in here then, cause I'll make a change on that, but mark it in here.
Cause this is the treasure.
Yep.
How do I?
Getting close to getting your question answered? No?
Yeah, I wanna get. I wanna see what I had written on there. But that, now I feel like I need to go add all of these up to compare to it. Here it is. Nope. She went one fifty-one, three fourteen.
She should start.
So I added this column, this is just the dollar fifty raise.
Yeah.
And we get one fifty-one, three fourteen, she's the two fifty-nine, two ninety-five in here. That's a hundred and eight thousand difference.
That's why I.
And this is all typed in, so numbers, you know. Hi.
Right.
Hi, Alora.
Holds up.
But now I, now I feel like I wanna.
So you can still receive money in there.
This isn't final.
Up to three.
I know.
So we, you were, we can change a whole other thing.
Well, that's what we figure in on the budget side.
Even after today.
That.
So I appreciate that.
All right, you come with good news, if not, turn around and go back over.
I definitely appreciate you, what you're doing here, that's for sure.
Still getting pulled from that one.
Because it's like this number, okay, so Todd added his, two fifty-three, two sixty-seven, and that's the right number. Since these have to be manually typed.
Yep.
Error happens. Though my Hazen school math, error happens also.
Sadly, I went to the same school.
I know, Alora too, I think.
So I, I learned the slide rule of the same.
How far is our Hazen school math getting us?
Okay, shit.
His brother's the math teacher too.
Sorry about that, everyone, but I don't have the sheet right in front of me, that's why they went down there.
I'll let, that was these numbers to see which ones have changed, so we knew it's, I mean, I didn't look at.
Possibly a big change.
This, yeah.
Yeah.
This is wrong.
Yeah, because not.
Carmen, am I understanding that right, like what this?
Oh, yeah, and that's what I went off.
This goal should be this. No, but that's, that's what I'm saying.
No, no, that's fine.
I want you guys to find this mistake, that's why I have Dawn go through it too.
But I wanna make sure I'm understanding. This number should be this number.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so that's a possible change.
And it is.
Okay.
Do you want me to take these while you're doing interviews? I mean, I can take these and compare to what's on that, the sheet, if you want me to, just double check. All I did was take, see what changed between this and the other one, I didn't look at these numbers, you know what I mean?
So you'll have this for the, the update by the August seventh, yeah?
Oh, absolutely.
Cause we need to have this.
I just need to kinda get a feel for which way you guys.
Yep.
Big stuff.
Yeah, just says general.
And then Dawn's gonna help me, I'll have her double check everything.
Sounds out of gems.
On the final.
On the final. Yep, and I'll do that too, but what happened here, Dawn.
Where was I?
Drawn her down, so then we know where we're sitting.
There's something going on with the apps.
Okay, here I'm back.
Um, Carmen, do you know, did we for sure on Shannon's budget? Remember how we were gonna take that five grand out? We did move that?
We did do that, and then put it back into her documentation thing, that was where we had up the.
Okay, so that got taken care of?
Yep, that got changed.
We took it out because it was already in a different spot, so that five should have come out completely.
She had it literally in that other fund that we could use, so then it lowered her.
It came out completely, okay.
Okay.
And actually, as we're talking, I got her budget right here. And.
So what's her?
Yeah, I used, I took the five thousand out and I put it into that documentation thing.
Okay.
So it lowered her budget.
So hers is a hundred and twenty-six thousand.
You didn't put it into that documentation thing, did you? You just took it out, cause she had enough in that.
No, no, I took, took that, that was an expense, that five thousand, so I took it out of her budget. And then, um, in the document preservation, we added the five thousand to line item four eighteen, index books, buyers and restoration, so then that was a thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so. But why, why did we add to it? Because she's got that account already there that had.
Money.
Had a hundred and one thousand dollars in it, so we shouldn't have had to add five thousand.
Okay, what, what I understood you guys wanted was to take that five thousand that she needed for that, to put it in her budget to show she could spend it out of the document preservation. So I added that, so then that line item went from thirty thousand to thirty-five thousand.
As a projected expenditure.
As a projected expenditure, yes.
Then how do, where do you show it as, uh, as a, how do you say it? As a revenue or an income, so that it's a zero?
No, that's not an income, this is money she wants to spend.
But it comes out of a different account?
Yes, it does, out of the document pres- preservation, which has all the cash you're talking about, yes. All her fees go in there, and yeah, she has quite a bit of money in there. So then we added that instead of taking that out of, so we didn't have to mill for it. She's gonna spend that money out of the document preservation.
Right, so in her overall budget, that five thousand is.
Is coming out of a different account that has all.
Doesn't.
But it's not being milled for anymore, correct? That's what I wanted to get.
There we go.
Yep.
But does it need to be there still?
It still has to show it, so she can spend it.
It still has to show, so she can spend it.
If she needs to, yeah.
Yeah, they, you gotta show it as an expense, but then you gotta show it.
At least it's not being milled for, but.
Then you gotta show it as, I, I'm not an accountant, but you gotta show it as income from another source. And effectively, you end up with a zero. So then at the bottom line, the requested amount would be zero.
In theory.
Yes.
We're at two point six eight one, and we're requesting, and then we're still at the final appropriation of it. Did we change like to seventy-five, did we take that out, then, that we were?
All bump ups were taken out.
And then what about the one thirty that went to nine one one then?
Now that, that didn't affect, that, that is not milled for, the nine one is a separate account.
But we put one thirty in.
Yep, we're, we're gonna take it from the equipment fund. If you prove it in the end, a hundred and thirty thousand's left in that nine one equipment fund, it'll just get moved over to the nine one one.
But we budgeted that radio money in the.
Yep, and that got taken.
Okay, that's, but it doesn't look like it, unless I'm, I'm seeing something different from what I'm, probably a different number then.
Did we get a chance to check on the fax lines and how much that was?
Yes, yes, that's why I was able to take, um, monies out of the auditor line item. Okay, let me.
And we went back through everybody's budget and took that out?
No, I didn't touch that budget. You guys went through, the only budget I touched was mine. Because you guys went through them with them, I'm not gonna go mess with anybody's budget. But, okay, so in the, um. Okay, so.
Cause Dawn, didn't you go around and see who put it in and who put it out, so we've gotta take that?
Oh, that, yes, yes.
These are just separate things.
That I did take out, and I took out of the, uh.
That's just separate things, ones for the copier and.
The printer contract, yes, those got taken out, actually, the sheriff's office had quite a bit, and the extension service.
Oh, I'm looking at her telephone here.
The other, okay, as far as telephone? No, the telephones did not get changed. The fax lines, um, they, they aren't getting paid out of two, like we went into that account where they had fax lines. And, okay, so in that miscellaneous under the, our fax line only costs with the phone hub expense, commission room, it, it was only twenty-five hundred. It's a very small expense. Um, and then that line item that we had, we're taking fax lines out of there. Yeah, here it is. That, that was only, um, did we talk to one about the fax lines? We did.
Yeah, there's, I don't think there's very many of us that have them, and actually, we talked about, in my opinion, they're kind of expensive for as often as we use them. Um, I have one company that faxes me that I don't know if they could actually do the electronic scan and send. Um, otherwise, as far as I'm concerned, I could get rid of my fax line, I, I mean, if they have to snail mail it over to me to get requests.
But even if we went to just one in like the courthouse, like one in Carmen's office, versus one in everyone's office.
Well, and that definitely, yes.
Yeah, that's definitely possible, because, yeah, when I looked at what they were charging me a month for that.
I'm sure, I remember you saying, you were like, it's the same as a phone line is what they said, so like seventy-some.
It's not worth as much as I use it, so it could go as far as I'm thinking.
Cause I feel like the sheriff's office has to keep one, cause they fax warrants back and forth.
Right.
The state's attorney.
Could go through the sheriff's department potentially, cause it's open twenty-four seven.
Yeah, I mean, we could potentially go down to two lines in this whole.
Yeah.
One over here and one over there.
And one over there?
Wouldn't bother Manny.
Yeah, but if it has to be sent to, be extended to the sheriff's office.
Okay. That we'll look into in.
Yep, yep. It's not gonna be a huge amount, but it's enough so, but it's enough so that I don't think it's worth having a fax line in my office anymore.
Well, we also wanna make sure that we, cause she had telephone line and every, some others were doing their telephone, so it wasn't duplicated.
Yeah.
Veteran service.
It's not represented.
I haven't gotten to talk to Ron about this, but I will do that, okay?[1708.96] Your fax lines only in the sheriff's and the auditor's. Okay, um, what else? What other questions you guys?
On the cash reserve, did you just set an amount or is that a percentage?
That's the thing.
I, I'm, I'm just asking, it doesn't matter.
I want, I'd like to bring that up Travis. We absolutely need a cash reserve. I tried to get in there just to get the mills down, so you guys could see it down, but we need more than nine twenty thousand. I would like to see at least a million. Last year it was like.
One point nine one.
One point nine.
And what did we?
Please let us have a reserve.
What, were you going to one point nine?
Well, right now.
I don't know if we would know that.
Yeah, right now, overall general fund is standing at, and this is everybody's budget, the general fund. We're, we're standing at forty-eight percent of the budget, which is good.
It's probably shaking.
Yeah, and that's July first, so that's just right at the mid, but we still have to just.
Right, well, always.
I know, I know, it's just.
Did we figure out anything for the ARMR or the NRG? IT.
I know, I know. I'm just trying to think how to, what to say.
I do know, I've, I've met some pushback on getting rid of ARMR.
And that's fine. I wish, I don't want to.
I don't care.
It'd be a really good deal, but here's the thing. If we can go forward with that financial software and they're on board with us and we're good and they're not opening us up like they were for months.
Agreed.
I'm just telling you, we have to have it online the first time. And I think they're going, I think they're going forward. But I would be, if that's what you guys wanted to, I.
Carmen, for audit, on page six, again, back to the book.
Yes.
For audit and examination fees. Okay, hold on, hold on. Got it right here, got it. We're requesting, we're, um, we're requesting seventy-five, but like year-to-date for twenty twenty-four, we've only used five. Okay, hold on, let me get this.
I think that includes, uh, we have to audit every year now?
Is that, that's where that one came from?
That's it.
And we're behind a year every year, and I think we're behind a year.
Seventy thousand came with the state audit. They're the ones who gave me the seventy thousand.
Right, okay, that's.
And they said that they have to do the two audits to catch us up.
Okay.
And that's where.
That makes sense.
Here, but I'm afraid.
I got another question too, in a different sense too, if, if we get, we're at nine hundred for our reserve and we don't change the, for the preliminary, we don't change our mills a lot. Would some of these cuts that we've taken out of here, can't we put that back into the reserve? Would that help bring the reserve up though?
As long as we don't exceed the final appropriation.
Right, right, so what you have right now in the preliminary.
It shouldn't change it into the number section.
You could accept it and then, but like Travis says, you go down from there.
I get that part, but I'm just saying like some of the cuts that we're talking about in the year we found or whatever.
Yes, oh yeah.
So if we put them back in as a reserve, I mean, that your bottom line's not gonna change, right?
Don't, your mills are gonna change.
And that is up just.
The mill won't, as long, I mean, as long as what you take out, you put in, the mill, we shouldn't change it.
That's what I'm saying, but it would bring your reserve up a little too, I think.
Make sure it re.
But I mean, we're still have.
Show it.
I'm just saying it might be a way to, when you read the reserve, it's not gone either though, so I mean, you'd use it if you needed it.
So, before we get too close here.
We got six minutes.
Yeah.
Would it make sense to recess this meeting and open the other one? Or do you, if we close it, then we're done with the budget talk for today, when we get to that time?
Oh, we can talk about, we can start again later.
So then we would recess this meeting and open the other one? Is that, is that what?
You're making me think.
Well, I mean, that, that's what I would do if you wanna, like if we have time in between interviews. We could, we could open it back up or, I mean, it's gonna be messy or.
Yeah, either way, cause typically.
See, if we close it, we're done. But if we recess it, we can come back to it.
Oh, we can call another meeting. We got everybody here. Yeah, let's.
Just recess?
I, I, no one's objecting to that. We can recess until.
Is this the one we're supposed to be after interviews?
After the interviews.
I was gonna grab, um.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's recess right now till after the interviews, and then we'll reconvene. And. Anyone has to.
I'm gonna.
Leave, you got five minutes.
Okay, I'm gonna take advantage of that five minutes.
I had to go sooner.
Thank you so much, Don.
No, no, the rest of the numbers, it's okay. I still, I just, I'm sure you're planning and zoning as to where the.
See, interviews, we should be separate.
The difference between.
Cause it's not part of the budget.
I will do sooner. I got them all.
That's the only one.
Uh, what I would do Carmen is I would stop it.
Stop the video.
And then at least.
Pause it, we're gonna pause.
I would completely stop it, or.
Okay, so whatever changes we have, I've got, Don's gonna double check all my numbers. The biggest thing is, is I wanna list out, what do you guys want changed? What do you want changed from this one with the bump ups?
Well, I'm dead set, heartbeat on this county JDA. I wanna change that from a mill to a fifty thousand dollar appropriation. And if I need to make that in a motion, which I hate making motions as chairman, but I certainly will if, um, that's the, what I need to do to see if, that way I can get the feeling of the rest of the commission, so. I'll entertain a motion to change the county JDA from the three mills to a fifty thousand dollar appropriation. Do I have a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
That was Jamie's second? Is there any other discussion on that?
I got a couple things on that, and I'm, I'm fine with whatever we do. The, the appropriation, that I wouldn't necessarily call it JDA, I would just leave it as, we're just coming in.
Yeah, I was, I.
So if we do an allocation, I would just say an allocation to MAC Ed.
And I would like it treated the same way as we've had, where he needs to come in and request.
Okay.
What that is.
Right, and the only other thing I was gonna say is like, when we talk about, um, mill levies and other county levies, my only thought process with the, the other county levy or the JDA portion of it, was then at least it kind of shows where stuff is coming from. But, um, I'm, I'm fine either way, um, how we put it in the budget.
Okay, so then.
Part of my feelings of that Travis, I'm not, I'm, I'm not totally against this JDA, I can kind of what it's trying to do, but I think we need to take care of a lot of other things before that is my question.
So. Well, that's convoluted, because it's entered as a county JDA. I made a motion to change it from a hundred and fifty-six to a hundred, to fifty. And you're recommending that we make it a fifty thousand dollar appropriation to MAC Ed. So.
Should we amend the motion?
Obviously, they're gonna say, oh.
It's the same thing, is what you said in your. But it's. The state's economic development dues, so that's what I'm assuming instead of.
But it got.
But it's.
Entered into the budget as a JDA.
Yeah.
Well.
On your front sheet.
On your front sheet, it's county JDA.
But.
Yeah, because that's a separate mill. Your appropriation.
Correct.
Would go under economic development dues.
Right.
Then amend and reword.
So we're changing everything, so.
Well, your motion was to remove it from the mill and do an allocation.
Correct.
You just said allocation. Did you say allocation to JDA or did you, you didn't specify. You just said that it would be an allocation.
Yep. Take that JDA out and to have an appropriation of the two thousand dollars.
Okay.
To MAC Ed.
Our, our. As long as we all agree with the motion and have an understanding of what the motion is.
I feel like.
We're good.
We should have the words in there though, so that when somebody in five years goes back to read these meeting minutes, it's clear.
That's what I'm getting at.
Because that is the problem with some of these meeting minutes, is they're not in years past. Not always clear.
So.
He still can't understand what it was actually done.
I'm, I think to clear, clean it up, I'll resend my motion.
Okay.
Okay.
And then. I don't need approval on rescinding my motion, do I? I just resend my motion.
Yep.
And I'll make a new motion. That says that we change the mill levy, remove the mill levy for the county JDA and make a fifty thousand dollar appropriation to MAC Ed.
I'll second.
Okay. That way.
I would have done two separate, but that's fine.
Yeah, I'm kinda doing two things in one motion here, which.
Yeah, we could have done.
It's more clear that way.
Yep, Jean made the motion, Jamie second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, well, I gotta vote. Aye, Jamie.
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Travis?
I'm gonna vote nay.
And Rick?
I would aye.
Motion passed. The reason I don't like making motions is cause your chairman's supposed to split the vote, and if, according to what I've been taught, the person who made the motion is supposed to vote first. Well, then now your chairman can't split that, so he's supposed to be the deciding. No, no contest on that one though, so we're good. So this'll change to fifty thousand. And it's gonna be MAC Ed.
So you're gonna put that on what page then?
It's gonna be.
Like last year's.
Actually, that will be under the general fund. And it will be under miscellaneous. So let's look at page.
Six.
Miscellaneous, page six.
Page six.
Down toward the bottom.
So just under county advertising, we can put MAC Ed?
No, miscellaneous.
Oh.
So it'll be in with the miscellaneous one?
So that's gonna.
So I'm gonna go plus. Fifty thousand.
Two, two nineteen?
Can't.
Carmen, could it go on page eight under economic development?
Call it MAC Ed?
No, no, in the miscellaneous fund, it's called MAC Ed.
Okay.
It's got a separate line under miscellaneous budget. It's got its own line.
Just cause there's a economic development section in the blue book on page eight.
I know, I saw that, but. I don't know.
You do what, whatever.
I wanna keep track of things.
Wherever it can keep track of, you do, you do you.
That's what I want.
So then the miscellaneous is gonna go up fifty thousand.
Yes.
From the one sixty-nine.
Two, two nineteen, six fifty.
Okay.
So Carmen, on this.
And then the minus is gonna go.
Well, I'll take out that.
That whole mill will just disappear.
It just comes off the summary sheet.
Yeah, on that summary page.
Oh.
Page one.
You take out a hundred and fifty.
But where did you enter it in here?
It's got its own, it's got its own page.
Oh, we in the, okay, gotcha, I'll find it.
Right after airport.
Yep, I'll find it. Okay, thank you.
I'll take both pages out.
Carmen, on this page six, in red, you have landfill wages plus benefits.
Yep, and that's just noting, that's where I took everything out.
So it's not added in this total at the bottom?
Right, it is not. It's in red and it's, yeah, it's negative. And then everything of that went back into Candy's landfill that we'll add in that.
So I have a question on the health insurance fund.
Yeah.
When, when we do that, does, um, does money go in there every month that's budgeted? Or is it all put in there at the beginning of the year when we get taxes?
No, every month.
Okay.
Yep, that's what I'm doing.
So like that, any snapshot within the end of month during the year?
Shows you.
Shows you the pluses and minuses of that.
I got one question too on the risk, page six.
Yes.
Risk management.
Yes.
We dropped way down compared to where we had that.
Yep.
Cause we had that, we created that fund with the NADACO.
Yep, there's a safety fund note. Yeah, and that is not.
So that's still.
That is a separate.
Back, back to that. We don't have to have the expenditures for him to spend that money? Out of that fund, like you said with the.
I say we do, but.
Like you said with Shannon's.
I, I say we do. But it's a brand new fund, and actually I pulled the budget sheets before we created that fund. So I'm thinking once, okay, now after this session, I'm gonna go in and put everything in the ass line and have it pull the budget sheet again. And then I wanna look at them, and that's when I'm gonna get a budget sheet for that fund. But remember, we don't mill for that fund. It's fun sitting there, and all that budget is gonna do is allow Jim to take so much money out this year and not, you know, not redline.
So it shouldn't show up in the blue book expenditures, or it's not part of the mill, or?
But then why are we doing it for Shannon's?
It would be its own account, like the nine one fund. That kind of thing. It's separate from the general fund, and we do not mill for it. It's a fund that, like the art fund account. You got, at the end of the blue book, there's an art fund, you know.
I still don't understand why we're doing it for Shannon's then.
Cause hers is separate too.
Yes, hers is separate too.
Right, just like that. It's a fund, yes.
Right, but then why did we have to put that five thousand dollars back in as an expense for Shannon? When she's gonna take it out of the fund?
Okay, we didn't put any money anywhere. All we did is added five thousand to her expense. So that if she needs that extra five thousand, because when it was in her budget, it was above and beyond the thirty thousand she already had in the document budget. Now remember, this is all just allowing her to spend that much money.
But then don't we need to do that for risk management also? For him to spend that money?
Yes, and that's what I'm just telling you. I didn't create, that fund wasn't actually created till after I pulled the budget sheets. And when I pulled the budget sheets once, they all come out at a time, so when I pull them again, then I will get that expense account out there. It's not, it's an old system. You can't just pull.
We're just filling our time with budget talk.
But I will get one. I will get one. I'll get one and then Jim and I'll talk about it and then we'll see it, but it's not part of this. Go ahead, Jamie.
I understand where Jamie's coming from. And me, you and I can talk after.
Yeah, let's talk about it, because.
I just think one either needs it or one didn't need the extra.
Right, no, I, I understand where you're tracking it. I understand where you're tracking.
Words, words are really hard today, but I. I think we're saying the same thing, but we're doing different things.
And, and you understand what she's having.
Yes, I do.
So we're gonna make sure we get you what you want.
That I understand what you're saying.
I'm gonna drink more.
Travis, in answer to your question, our health insurance fund at this, at the end of six months was down seventy-two thousand. And I think we budgeted around a hundred and fifty for the extra ten percent, so.
Okay, so it is, it is coming down.
It is coming down, so.
Yeah, I just didn't want us to have a whole bunch of money in at the beginning of the year and then it shows like the count went up.
Yeah, no, no, it is coming down, yeah.
And I, I guess if I need to make this a motion to see what it looks like, but since we're gonna, we're taking out all of the landfills, wages and benefits and putting it back on her. Is it something that we look at doing an allocation to her to help ease some things? Or do we make it in a general session motion that we help pay some of her bigger expenses? I, I'm just trying to get the feeling of the board, I guess.
I don't know if I'd necessarily.
I don't know if I like the allocation.
Right, but.
I'm, I'm just trying to think of things.
I don't know if it'd necessarily be a huge consideration in the preliminary or even the final, but like after the first of the year or sometime during the year.
And that's, that's what I.
Make an adjustment.
Okay, that's also.
You know, that's, that's where that cash reserve can assist.
Right, and make sure that we understand, okay, about how much I'm gonna give, and then we make sure they have it in the cash reserve.
Right.
I would like to see that go.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
That's all for the items we need to consider.
Let's recess, let's, let's recess this meeting again for about a couple minutes. Until we're all back, and our next interviewer is, interviewee is here, then we can start that. So we're in recess again. All right, we're, I guess, open-ended comment, statement, question, where are we?
Okay, we have just finished talking about, right at the end about landfill. Just make sure at the end you think about that and possibly something, you know.
And I know like Don said, in manage, like she's done very well being self-sustaining, and I do think overall we need to look at increasing rates and whatever, but I know that this is a major stressor to her that would potentially help by alleviating some of that if we can do something with. And they are county employees, so.
How much is it?
Okay.
Can you split it, like can there be, like just wage versus benefits?
I know, that's what I was also thinking, is that, is that a possibility to just, just take their, like.
Right, yes.
Wages out of it?
Or you could just do an allocation.
Or an, that's, that's what, I didn't know what is the simpler, cleaner method.
Talking with Linda and how McKenzie County did it, they just did an allocation to help.
Put this out, and then they pay all their major expense, like if they would need a new dozer or whatever.
They do a combination of things, but one of them is they can just do an allocation to it to make sure that that. Fund is still possible.
Not a total enterprise like we are, they were more of a combination, she said.
Yeah.
But she said you can still leave it as an enterprise, which I really don't understand why we even still have it as an enterprise, to be honest.
Because it is self-sustaining, that's the thing.
But it.
I know, it's, to me, it's confusing also, but cause essential code says we have to. Okay, and then once again, I gotta be careful with my class A, class B language. Is, um, land, uh, we have to provide some means of landfill.
Right.
As per essential code, now, it doesn't mean it has to be within our county, but we have to have some agreement somewhere. So yeah, that's a little bit.
And yeah, McKenzie County does do a combination essentially.
Yeah.
So I think without an attorney here, that we could make an allocation, being it's, uh, statutorily required, and we have a landfill.
It probably would be the cleanest.
That's, I.
You know, cause then everything stays, and then we just, hey, we put a little bit more in here to stabilize that fund. Kind of along that, I see we still have the ARPA funding in here. Uh, page forty-three. Have we, have we allocated everything, okay.
A lot of it's allocated.
But we have to.
We just haven't spent it yet, so.
Yeah, yeah, but what I'm saying is that it either has to be spent or allocated by September of this year.
Yes.
So, I mean, we can't, we can't use it.
It is.
I thought it was, but.
Yeah, I think we did.
I thought it was for the software.
I thought between the Chiller project and the, um, software, we had allocated all that.
So what I'm saying is that we can't use it in twenty-five's budget, it has to be either, either gone or allocated this year. And, I mean, just so that we're not.
Is it showing up as revenue or expenses?
No, it's just showing that, that's what's in that one.
It shows that we got forty-five thousand in here yet, but I thought we had.
I thought we allocated it to the Tyler software upgrade.
Tyler stuff, yeah.
Okay, so it's all, it's gonna be gone.
Fine tuning words here, so if we have it allocated but don't have it spent by the thirty-first of this year, December thirty-first, we're okay.
September.
September.
Yeah.
Do we have to have the money zeroed out by September?
No, we have to have it earmarked.
Okay.
That it's gonna be spent. Yes, so like if we have it earmarked for the software and we don't make that bill until December or January.
Okay.
It's, we're using it.
Yep.
But what I was getting at is that we can't depend on it for something else in the budget, because it has to be.
It has to be got.
Correct. Yeah, okay. It's one of those things where you had to spend it by, you know, certain dates, so, whereas like the Prairie Dog doesn't have that stipulation, fifteen oh five money doesn't have that stipulation.
Based on Travis's question and comments, double check to make sure that we have this allocated so that it's zeroed out.
And then you were talking with, like the landfill, the allocation.
Cause we don't wanna lose, we don't wanna lose forty-six thousand dollars. I'm sure we do, but.
Tyler's gonna eat that up.
But.
We could have it.
But so that you can answer Travis's question, find out where it's, where it's gonna go.
And if we don't, then we can take it from reserves after the first of the year.
So we should put it in there.
It'd be nice to have it allocated in the preliminary budget, you know.
So they're gonna have a. Carmen is gonna get an answer for you as to where that forty-five thousand is going to go. So that we know, yeah, we, we, we need to know that irregardless, so.
But what Rick and I were just talking about is that we should probably have in the general, the fifty thousand allocated to the landfill, if that's the number we're.
Now, that's, that's besides the ARPA funding, you're on a different subject now.
Different subject, yeah.
Okay.
Like we're talking the landfill, we should probably allocate that, put that allocation in that, rather than taking it out of the reserve after the first of the year.
Oh, yeah, we can do that. Okay, I'm gonna make a note.
Whatever, whatever number we.
Whatever number you guys decide, then I'll make a note here. That's what I'm looking for, direction, what do you want me to do with this budget, so you guys go look at it.
Okay, so you're recommending, or what you're asking and or recommending is that rather than taking fifty thousand out of this, uh, reserve fund.
After the first of the year, we'd rather make an allocation to the general budget. Now, for the preliminary and the finals, so we're, you know, we have it in there rather than hanging out after the first of the year.
So did you wanna leave the reserve at nine hundred, or you wanna change your reserve to eight fifty and put fifty thousand?
We wanna reserve a little bit.
Yeah, we were moving that reserve.
That's why I'm saying you put it in as an expense or as a, a planned transfer, so that it's within the budget, not.
And I'm, I'm okay with that, I'm just saying, because originally you're, we had said it's gonna come out of the reserve, what are your thoughts and plans then with the reserve?
I would like to raise it.
And, and make a allocation for the landfill of fifty thousand. So increase this a hundred thousand and fifty thousand to the landfill.
Yep.
If we're gonna take it out of the reserve, what we would do is put it in that transfer sheet, like we do with the, uh, the social services. I gave you this transfer sheet.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't think they wanna take it out of the reserve, they wanna put it in the budget somewhere.
And what I would do is where I listed it on page six, I would change that number.
Oh, okay. Just put it under that line, and that's.
Under what?
So in the landfill where she's got it ran it out on that first page six, she would just put the fifty thousand back in there.
Take that, yeah.
Oh, there you go. Wait a minute, do you have one that's, or you're talking down here?
Right here, this is the landfill where I took everything out.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, at least fifty thousand, that covers her health insurance and kind of workman's comp like that.
Is that the number we can work with?
Okay.
No, I mean, I, her salaries, all three salaries together equal a hundred and eighty thousand, but I think in a little bit.
Yep, follow you.
To start with.
Should we start, should we, I mean, where do you go with that?
Right.
Okay, what are you guys talking about right now?
Just if fifty thousand is a.
If we're looking at that, it's the right number, fifty grand, I mean, we just threw that number out.
I just don't want the.
Cause the total they're asking or was looking for was the two seventy-five. That's everything that would cover all the wages.
Right, the wage, just the wages alone, like just the salaries, nothing else was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand for the three salaries.
And that's if you completely took it out of there.
Yes, right, yes.
But that's not saying.
I mean, do we go like say a hundred thousand, yeah, that covers almost a little over half, or, or are they splitting half?
I'm not sure, I just, because these numbers are already. Right, hundred and ninety, they're not, hundred and eighty-eight. It's just the three, like, when I look at, when I look at this salary sheet with the dollar fifty.
One eighty-seven, one fifty-four, yeah.
Right, and I separated it, and you guys got that sheet, and their total wages with the dollar fifty, well, it's a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I just rounded to one eighty-eight, yeah.
Where was there, uh, did they have a surplus when you took all the wages out, or the surplus amount, or? Like where, where is their budget lying?
I can, I can tell you, according to this, at the end of June, they started out with three hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two. They have three hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and thirteen, so they are actually only backwards, what, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars?
Based on, uh, budgeted and actual.
I mean, she's pretty.
Those are actually incoming versus expenses.
Numbers and worries.
Well, based on that, if we allocated fifty thousand, it should be.
I think it would be a start, and I guess if we need to look at, especially since we're in, gonna go into this closing project this year, or capping project this year. Where we're at, I mean, fifty would be a start, at least it's their health insurance, because they are one budget, just like the road department, that it comes out. Yeah. Cause really about fifty thousand would cover their workman's comp and health insurance.
Okay, based on that comment, if, uh, like everybody else is out of the general. Would it make sense, and I don't know if this is possible, but would it make sense to refund what came out of their insurance from that fund?
So that, we had this talked before, that's what we were questioning, and we talked with Gwen about it, we were questioning if that's what was supposed to be happening, since we're paying out of that health insurance fund? And it, that's not happening, like only the ten percent or whatever is being refunded, not, not all of them. But yes, I thought that, that was another thought I had, like is that something that would, from that health insurance fund, if the total amount could come out?
And just leave the, yeah, leave the health there.
But is the fifty thousand allocation just a cleaner?
It's probably, well, and I'm, I'm not saying getting rid of the fifty thousand, I'm just saying like, is that something we look into, because it's what, three employees? I mean, it's not a large dollar mill.
It's forty-four thousand dollars.
For this, this year?
For this year.
Yeah.
And I, you don't have to give me an answer today, you might have to research that if we can do that.
But what you'd like to see then is to give them their health, and then fifty thousand allocated, right?
Cause that would almost make up the amount of their sal, or like half of their salaries. I don't know what the better, easier to keep track of route is, I've had a lot of thoughts of three AM of how to do this.
And at this point, it's just a preliminary, I mean.
I'm just gonna throw out there though, if you do this for them, then you're gonna have other departments that are gonna come in and ask.
But the other departments have Melodies, or they're either the general or the road department would have Melodies, and this is an enterprise fund that only.
Okay.
Historically got my.
I had that thought too, I mean, if you do it for one, others are gonna want it, but the others in a sense.
Don't have the same situation as us.
Yeah, okay.
Just throwing it out there so everybody's on the same page.
No, I, I had the same thoughts, because I don't.
No, what I would do is do that fifty thousand allocation and then refund from that health fund, because that's an independent fund.
So right now in the budget, the health insurance for the landfill is budgeted separately from the health insurance fund. But you're recommending that we take the county landfill health insurance amount out of the health insurance fund, rather than. Budget it separately, I don't know the right word for that, appropriate.
Instead of taking it out of their tipping fees and stuff like that, where they generate the income, we just cover it, it's not part of that.
So to speak, general fund.
Yeah.
But then you don't have to raise the general fund, the mill, though, we can receive fifty, almost forty-seven thousand now.
It's coming out of an established fund that has.
Cause right.
Okay, we're gonna be looking at these numbers, we both hear what's going on, and make a note.
And.
And we're gonna clarify things, and if we have to, we're gonna email you guys to clarify, okay, so that you get it right.
I wanna get right what you got. If we can do it, I would like to see that.
And are we still appropriating an additional fifty thousand for that? Okay.
But I mean, rather than doing a hundred to the general fund, now we can take fifty from the general fund.
I wanna do however we can not raise a general fund, but.
That other fund, you will, you will raise your Melodies.
Right.
We'll see.
And this would just be in twenty-five, you'd have to reevaluate it every year.
Just a thought.
And the forty-four thousand is the whole year, is all their benefits for the total?
Forty-four thousand and thirty dollars.
Okay.
Is what I have written.
Their health.
For the whole year.
For the whole, yeah, for the three employees.
Okay.
And Carmen, on the road department.
Yes.
Because some people did write in their salaries and bump ups, and some did, but the road department, all bump ups were taken out of like.
Uh, uh, yep, I did, I took everybody's, um, out of the road department.
Do, I know the road department's mills are close to what they need to be, like, do we need to. Look at taking like that two hundred thousand out for the eighty building, I would love to see that happen, but if we need to buy a million dollars in gravel and half a million dollars in royalties, maybe that project is to.
Maybe this is not the year to do that.
Yeah, we can, yeah.
Like those kind of things.
Yeah, that's kind of, well, I mean, it could be preliminary or final, but.
Since we're under right now on mills, like leave it alone. I didn't know whatever I saw, that was just something.
Did, just out of curiosity, did any of you add up the total mills?
I haven't.
You must know something, though.
I don't, yeah, our mills right now. The last time I checked, I had not looked, we're over thirty-three mills higher than we were last year.
I was, cause I know last year we had a zero, actually, and.
Well, we went back, we went down last year, but we didn't have any unorganized roads, so that seventeen or eighteen or whatever of it, right off the bat. Ten of it they approved, so they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to realize that it's, they're gonna be at least ten higher, but I'm just saying.
But that's one, I, that's one thing I didn't under.
But.
I feel like last year was lower than it should have been, like it was great, but I feel like it was lower than it should have been.
But are we, are we where we're supposed to be? And if we, if we're where we're supposed to be, then we did just fine.
That's.
I would compare it to a three-year average.
Right.
Or, you know, what.
Yeah, no, and I'm, I'm not saying, but I'm just telling you, the last time I did the math, we were looking at being thirty, 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 and people are getting.
But we, when we go down from twenty-three, did we go down like eleven or twelve miles?
I don't know if it was that much.
I, yeah, I don't know.
Okay, so you wanna look at it.
It was more than I had.
Well, I mean, so like, so twenty-two was X mills, twenty-three was X mills, and last year was.
Right, yes, to be honest.
We're three-year average.
Yeah.
It'd be more like if our mills were, were twenty mills.
Well, she was just talking total mills, so see where we are in total.
Well, my question would be if we were twenty mills, twenty mills, and then zero, and now back to twenty. Why, why are that?
Yeah, so the zero was the unorganized, we went to zero on that.
But I mean, overall.
Overall.
I'm just doing a general, like.
Yeah.
I'm not using actual numbers, but you know, why, why did all, why was that one year drop so much? You know, so.
Well, and I know our road mills went down considerably, because we knew we were getting Prairie Dog money, we knew we were getting.
Right.
And that would be answers we would get.
That would be the answers to tell the public is, we had two million dollars in state and federal support.
That we don't have this year.
Uh, no, no, we do.
We, we haven't spent it yet.
I got six.
Cause we've delayed some of our budgets.
Six thousand dollars.
Now, what do you got?
This is funding for next year, so we got the funding for that whole.
Right.
And we need the mills too to, you know, for the project. I'm not saying, I'm, I'm just saying, road department's in good shape, I would say, because state has given them a lot of.
Right, but we can't use house bill money or Prairie Dog money to pay salaries and equipment.
Well, I know, the general fund is one of my concerns.
Yeah.
I'm not picking at the road department, but I don't wanna be in a bad spot three years down the road, when it was like, oh, we should have cut some of this stuff, and. Not everybody's wishes.
Got a calculator, Travis?
Yeah.
Eighty-seven, twenty-nine last year.
Say that again, please.
Eighty-seven point two-nine. Twenty-two was one oh one point oh eight. Twenty-one was one oh nine point six-six.
So, but.
Twenty, or, sorry, fourteen?
And right now you're saying there.
I, the last time I looked, you guys, there's been some changes and stuff, it was thirty-three mills we were over, so if you add thirty-three to last year's, you're up to a hundred and twenty, which is where. I did, was gonna add it this morning, but I didn't get, didn't get a chance to do that yet. Just an observation, you guys.
So, and you said thirty-three hired?
That's what it was the last time I added them all together. I had it on my to-do list, and it went.
So twenty-five proposed is about a hundred and twenty mills?
Hundred and twenty point two-nine.
Yeah.
Approximately.
Approximately. Which puts us ten mills over what we were in twenty-two.
Right, it puts you, yeah, over the highest, yeah.
But can we pinpoint which taken off?
Why?
JDA, so that's two point six-eight.
So you can get us.
So that's another, that's, you're back, back at two again, two-one.
Yeah, the, the way to figure out, it would be to know what, the individual ones, so the general, uh, road level, but see what changes.
I will forever say last year was low.
It was, road department was extremely low. What was the road department last year, John?
County road last year? County road last year, eighteen oh-six. Oh, no, 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 six to thirty-one. Six point three-one. Six point three-one.
Six point three-one?
And there was no unorganized. So if you add the ten to that, that the voters approved, you're up to sixteen. Twenty-three-one, which is, I think, pretty close to where we're at right now, isn't it? On that one, so.
So, I'm thinking a lot of this is the road.
But last year we had seven point two-three in to secondary roads, that's a number.
We're gonna have to spend it at some point, and now it's to get it passed.
And it's likely going to be told next year. You have fifteen point five-nine in the county road.
About the program sheets and budget sheets for the road department, now I'm thinking, where do I have them?
That one, Charlie, Rick, do you know, did Charlie ever find out, can we use any of these fund funds for gravel? Or royalties, or crushing, or?
We can use, I haven't heard on whether we do use the Harper, I think we use the fifteen oh-five, can we, Charlie?
The fifteen oh-five is considered local, so my assumption was that you could, prairie dog was the one I was concerned about.
So if you look at your transfer sheet down at the bottom, it shows you all the funds that you're gonna be using for the county road, this all goes for the county road. But we didn't have an answer if we could use it on the actual purchase of gravel itself.
From Charlie?
Right.
I haven't gotten to look at these things on.
He didn't say anything about gravel.
Cause that.
But Charlie's well aware that you guys wanna do it, did he help you with this, I'm sure he helped you with that. Cause he's the one I was counting on with these monies, okay, so how much do we need here to? But I think you're right, I think that each, fifteen oh-five can be used for things.
Didn't know if it had to be specific projects, or if in general.
So what we wanna do is define the difference. I'll make a note, and I can ask, um.
If that helps you with your question.
So as it stands right now, we have questions on the county road fund.
Okay, so specifically, your question on the final question, Charlie, whether your funds can be used for gravel, right? Anything else on the county road? That I need to look up?
No, but that was just my only point, if we're looking to lower mills, then maybe like, that, maybe that two hundred thousand needs to come out.
Yeah, that didn't tell me if we can use prairie dog funds.
If we're thirty, if we're thirty-three mills over.
And my question too to Charlie was, okay, if we're gonna get grants, then, then I haven't added any grant money. You know, that he gets, that we don't have to, we can take it off. So, but I have to look that email up, I don't, that would make a big difference, the grant.
Well, if you're talking the same, uh, email, Rick, just have it.
Yes, I am. Again, there's nothing for real.
You'll have more questions when you're off that, you'll email me back to ask, cause it doesn't really take, for what we're asking.
And it's so hard to budget for grants.
And, right, but, I'm just saying, if we're looking to lower mills, we're gonna have to look at.
Okay, anything else, so we, we need to review the county road fund also, apparently, more, scrutinize it some more.
Right.
See where we're at with the grants, see where we're at with.
I have one seventeen twenty-seven, adding them together now.
Which one seventeen?
One seventeen twenty-seven. Hopefully I didn't miss any, I took JDA out, but I did not add in the two fifty thousands that you guys have allocated, and that will have to be in there too, so.
Okay, we still have time before August tenth, so we got an August seventh meeting. And if anyone feels that we need a, a meeting before that, let me know.
We need to have questions, we're gonna ask you guys, just, just make sure we're getting it right.
Well, that's, definitely have this on the agenda for the August seventh meeting, budget talks.
Carmen, I still have one question.
Even if you don't allocate.
Hold on, let me make sure, and then I'll, I'll hear what you guys.
Even if you don't allocate a time, you can even.
Okay, I'll put it under other.
Yeah, cause we need to have a, put it this way, we need it on every meeting, until August.
I actually put, oh, put true budget from their budget on at eleven.
That's fine, we just need. Okay, so it's on there as far as budget, yeah.
Unfortunately, I didn't write this completely out, I just put on Jim's budget, um, for some reason, on line budget item, four, four zero, billion improvements. I had put that possibly that forty thousand could come out, but I don't remember why.
Forty thou- okay, cause I know I made a note where he talked about bathrooms, of doing, doing these bathrooms in the old part of the courthouse.
But then, is that, is that where, because we have the hundred and seventy-eight in that building fund already, did we need to budget the forty thousand for that? But then again, that's back to, do we need to budget it so he can use that fund?
I can't remember exactly what it was.
I just don't, I don't.
If he's gonna do it, he has to budget, but if you guys want to just.
We'd have to ask him, does he have explanation for it?
He had something for it to remember, and I just put, I remember I tapped it off and put, maybe out, but I don't have why.
And he said that what he was gonna use it for was redoing these bathrooms right here, these two bathrooms in the old courthouse.
I suppose he figures if it needs to come out. But that's back to that question of.
What I recall is he didn't sound like it had to be done.
Can you stop by my office after this is, after you're all done today, so just so you and I can have the same page? For sure, for sure? Okay, thank you.
So.
I just couldn't remember why I had it.
It was just a project he wanted to do, but it could be taken out. I don't mind thinking these things, I know that's what those monies were for, that's what I put a note in.
Fifty grand, that's almost a mill.
It is.
I think we should consider removing it, since it's not required, he didn't say it had to be done.
No.
He said it's something that.
It's kinda like the last of the things to be updated in the courthouse.
So at least I'm not the only one that doesn't quite remember it, I feel a little better, but.
Sure, call me in real quick. Well, I hate to cut something and then.
Right, I don't know, I wanna make sure, cause like I said, I had it taken, but obviously I should have wrote it in.
Jamie's gone. Can you bring her over to the board?
Sound like your wife. Where are you?
We have, we all have partial notes on the forty thousand for building improvements, so, help, we're phoning a, phoning a friend, yes.
Using our lifeline?
Yes. What was the forty thousand for, for building improvement? The bathrooms? Bathroom remodels, is the bathroom in that?
What, what's the, is it some, something we need to do, what's his reason?
Is it something, yeah. Okay, bye.
He's coming?
He's coming.
Okay.
What was that?
He's coming over.
But yes, it's just for the bathrooms.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I thought it was for those bathrooms in the conference room.
It is, it's those two and, those two and, and these. I think it's the last of the ba- like, the last of anything that needs to be remodeled.
Okay.
I thought it was for both sets of bathrooms, but maybe when he said both sets of bathrooms, he meant men's and women's.
Right. In courthouse, that's what my note was, bathrooms in courthouse.
Right, but there's two bathrooms right next door too.
I didn't think he talked about those.
Well, you're thinking like, over here, in the shop, we're getting mail.
I just got a text, no, no, I said, where are you at?
I never know where Jim was at.
I'm sure Anthony gets his name one.
Gets them frequently.
You know, there's this free house called Life Free Sixty, where my kids are now.
I need to get that for my dad, but he knows about it, so we have to hit it on and then hide it, because.
Look at that one pretty close. And then I'm still reviewing all the, the wages, I think, and, oh, okay, cell phone.
And fax line, make sure that we have a fax line.
But Jim's here, Jim, we wanna cut the forty, forty or fifty thousand for bathrooms.
Is it those bathrooms and these bathrooms, it's all, all the bathrooms?
We all remember a couple of them.
Everybody had partial notes.
No, I'm just, I, I was just being crass there, but what was your request there for that, why?
To remodel them, that's the only, you know, these are the only ones that didn't ever get remodeled.
Okay.
And these are still pink and blue from the seventies and.
It will come back in style, I think.
Oh, was it like, this one right here in this little conference room?
Yeah, and the bigger ones over here.
But.
It's got mismatched tile on the floor and things like that, and it just.
But they.
But they operate okay?
Yeah. They operate okay, it's just.
I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna consider, uh, cutting that out of the budget, for next year anyway. Okay, we didn't wanna do it without talking to you, put it that way.
That's what, cause I know we always talked about it, and it just never happened, but.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim, sorry.
Okay, so then we can read, uh, read that.
I feel if we're footing for the, I, I, I strongly feel we should take the two hundred thousand out for the road department.
I, I agree with Jamie.
Okay. For the building improvement, or the ADA improvement.
Oh, yeah, for the plumbing budget, yeah.
Yeah, let's do that, I hate, I hate saying, let's leave it in there, because we might need it for something else, but that's kind of the.
If we had room to wiggle, I would say leave it in there for fun, but we don't have room to wiggle.
It's for the preliminary anyway, you see when it ran down.
Being deceiving to tell our taxpayers that we might spend it on something else, so. Yeah, I agree, let's pull it.
Once we find out the gravel question of if we can use other funds.
And then we adjust that one.
Right.
Right.
Maybe it needs to be split into year one and year two or something, make a plan.
Did you, did you follow all that?
I have, okay.
Are you keeping up?
In my files in my office, I have what those funds can be spent on, do you guys want me to go grab them? HB fifteen oh-five in the column.
I mean, I'd rather if you know, I pay Charlie to know.
It's the prairie dog one though, that we wanna know.
I got road department, yeah, took out the two hundred thousand, that was for the particular, make it first time in the file really quick here. Oh, right.
And Jim's bathroom.
Yep, item for forty, forty thousand.
Okay.
Okay, fax lines, we're gonna end them to run at the auditor.
That allows us to have more there.
Okay.
It's more per one.
Yeah.
And then cell phone.
Yes.
The thing with those are, like.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say.
They're gonna have to pick their own, because they cannot release their names and numbers, where you're gonna need to have one, so it'd have to be two plans.
Your happiness.
Yeah.
So those are the ones.
You guys wanna go through those plans and.
Well, I'm thinking there's probably people that don't need, need cell phones, and we haven't covered that yet. They won't change the budget much, but. Every fifty dollars helps, so.
But I mean, the building, those two hundred dollars, that's, that's a quarter million dollars.
There's a lot of these, that we just have zero. But if this goes down, this goes down.
We've had a lot of changes here, so I'm gonna look at.
That's coming out of the road, that won't help the other.
No, only, except the forty thousand's gonna help, general funds, the two hundred thousand have a lot of mills on them, county road.
Right, which, which adds into the total mills.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, yeah, that pulls down the total mills, two hundred thousand's gonna pull down the total mills by most.
Three point seven, eight mills. They're, they're just gonna look at.
Yes, they are, they're not gonna look at each separate. Okay, verdict is, one of the questions on the very first page is, can prairie dog funds be used for gravel projects on county roads with a big old yes?
Oh.
So, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, man.
So we can pass the gravel.
We can burn through that in a hurry.
I did make a little more information on that gravel project too, as far as the road.
They were about ten to a five. And I don't know about legacy either, we have all those legacy foundations.
Royalties, it all depends on what's a grade with the gravel.
Project, down that road, plus, plus that also comes out to the negotiation amount.
Because then you tell you, this is what we got, this is what we're costing, it's only worth, you know, you don't say it's worth this when it's only worth that.
Yep, yep. Okay, anything else for the good of the meeting?
I think we're where we gotta be, and, like, if we.
We're kind of at a point where we need all the numbers readjusted, so we know where, what we can add or cut next.
Right, cause if we, if we just took out two hundred and forty thousand based on the buildings and the road department, that's a little over four mills we just cut.
Right.
Okay.
So that, I mean, this is count for everything, but I mean, it.
Yes.
It get us to within a few of twenty twenty-two.
But I, like you said, cell phones and stuff, I mean, I think it's a significant number of lines that we're paying for.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's, I, I know it sounds probably petty, but every fifty dollars amounts to something, especially if there's not a need for it.
Right.
Fifty times. Okay, so now you're talking about cell phones, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and it was mostly for, like, a lot of the employees in the road department?
Okay, and that's something.
And Alroy was going to look into that, and.
They're going to do that, okay, yep, that's, okay, that.
And then just make sure we get the fax line one figured out.
Okay, cause what I got down for the fax line is we're gonna limit it to one at the sheriff, and one in the auditor. Okay, cause what I got now for the fax line is we're gonna limit it to one at the sheriff's and one in the auditor's office, and I'm gonna get ahold of West River, and we're gonna.
But I do think, just because of legal purposes, we need to make sure that the state's attorney's office.
Okay.
Doesn't have to have, like, they do a lot of.
And they're a separate.
Emailing, but I, I, we need to make sure that.
We're doing it right.
Right.
Right, and I'll check with them, and at the most, they will have three.
But the other way around, couldn't, uh, sheriff's department use the?
No, because the, like, the dispatchers and stuff, they can't leave the control room.
Oh.
So, you need.
They have to have theirs right there.
It has to be right there for some of this stuff. I, I think the state's attorney's office would be more willing to go that way, but if they need whatever legal purpose need to have it in their office, then.
Now, they might require for their stuff.
That's. They might make something with Marcy's law or something.
One of those where if you're doing one fax a year, or if you're doing one fax a day, makes a difference.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, if you're doing.
It's nice that the courthouse individuals are willing to share.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I appreciate Don saying that she's okay with.
Okay, but you guys are gonna take care of this.
How about the, and we're, we're sure that there's no duplications of telephone bills from your budget to anybody else's.
And we were checking on that and.
Okay.
Okay, just another thing that could be.
That was by somewhere else.
Um, FYI, HB fifteen oh five says the distributions under this section must be used for the maintenance and improvement of township pavement and paved roads and bridges too, so I would guess you could use gravel for that one too, so.
You're upgrading your roads.
Basically, we can use it on the roads, for almost anything for the roads. So, we could buy culverts, we can buy probably even road signs. As long as it's got something to do with roads, okay. And my understanding is we basically can use it for salaries and bonuses and.
That much so far.
Okay, anything else? And I'm gonna adjourn the meeting if we have nothing else.
Okay, so I'm gonna make this down, wait.
You're on the side.
Yeah. I'm gonna work on these numbers, I'm gonna try to be modest as possible and double check at a rate, and then I'm gonna email.
Yep. Yep, yes.
When I got it done, you guys can look at, and if anybody has any other questions, I think I missed some, I don't think.
I'll probably call or text, cause I'm not really good at thinking, so. I'm getting there. Yeah, I get it.
I appreciate my other commissioners how diligent they are at going through this, because I've been not doing a good job. I was, I was thanking you guys for how diligent you guys are for going through this, because I'm not doing my part. I'm not doing as good as I should be doing, so I greatly appreciate what you, the rest of you are doing.
My husband would buy me auto steer in my hayride, I could review it even more when we're not driving.
I will be having a discussion with him.
It's not in his budget, I'm just telling you. His accountant says no.
Okay, anything else for the budget meeting? We will adjourn.
Poor guy.
He do that a lot, we don't. Twenty-four, twenty-four.
Thanks, Eliza, for coming out, Travis. I said, thanks for, uh, taking time to come here, especially by, she has to take personal time.